Cancel for the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, roll call.
Supervisor Kowal?
Here.
Treasurer Roman?
Here.
Trustee Anderson?
I don't want to be here.
Trustee Voorhees?
Present.
Trustee Ruggles?
Here.
And trustee Smith's on her way.
Okay, I'd like to get a motion for approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion from Mr. Noble looking for support.
The board.
I have support from Mr. Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it, motion carries. Next item, number five, public comment. You would have three minutes to state your business if you care to do so at this time. You'll have to state, come up to the podium and state your name for the recorder. Any takers at this time?
I am sorry. I'll be fast because it looks like you have a lot of people waiting. So Christine Long, your Oakland County Commissioner, address 4200 Tealane, Wolverine Lake. Just a brief update, our budget passed, I think you heard, $1.1 billion, and the tri-party funding got added back in of $2 million, so that will be available for the township. The veterans' ride free on the Woda and Smart is continued. It was going to be discontinued, but we funded that indefinitely. So if we can try to promote, if you know some veterans, that they can take the transportation and Woda, I made sure they're involved. Yes, okay. So make sure that you promote to any veterans you know that have trouble getting to their appointments or anything, that their rides are free from Woda, Noda, Smart, and People's Express, so no matter where they live. So they can get free rides indefinitely now. So that's a nice thing that we did. And I was able to, hopefully, I didn't make it to your event, the trunk or treat, but secure the $2,000 sponsorship. So I have to check with Kelly to make sure she gets the check from the county yet, and then, but that, that was nice to be able to sponsor that. So, and as always, anything that any of you need, text, call, email, anytime, I'm always available. Thanks.
Thank you, Christine. Anyone else at this time? Yes?
Can I speak on the block grant yet?
You need to, uh, that's, this isn't, there's a public hearing on that.
Pardon?
We have a public hearing on that, so you can speak at that time.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, all right. All right. Any other takers for public comment? Okay, closing public comment. Looking for a motion to approve consent agenda, which lists revenue expenses, check disbursements, and department reports.
Motion, motion to approve consent agenda.
I have a motion from Mr. Roman. I have a second from Mr. Noble. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Item 7A, approval of the minutes of regular board meeting September 16, 2025. Any questions or comments from the board?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve, looking for support?
Support.
I have motion, support, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm telling everybody to turn their phone off, and I left mine on. Okay. Okay, we're gonna go to presentation swearing in of some police officers. Chief, the floor is yours.
Now you can have her come up, chief. Now you can have her come up.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor, I appreciate it. All right, Kelsey, now you can come up. Super excited to stand in front of everybody.
Kelsey, he's not the best at directions.
Really?
It's not your fault, Kelsey.
Yeah.
All right, this is Officer Kelsey Saunders, her family, mother and father, Jason and Jody Saunders, where you guys at? All right, right there. Boyfriend's parents, Holly and Grel Russo. All right. Grandma Jane?
Hi Grandma, how are you?
And then brother's girlfriend Shelby, Shelby here? All right, she's taking the photos, great. Officer Saunders was born in Owasso, Michigan in April of 2003. Boy, that should make us all feel super, super old.
My car's older than that.
Her parents raised her along with her two older brothers in Chesapeake. She attended New Lothrup High School, graduating in 2021. Officer Saunders began early college in 2019 as a junior in high school, attending Baker College in Owasso. She subsequently graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice in the spring of 2024. Officer Saunders completed the police academy at the law enforcement regional training academy in Fenton, Michigan. Officer Saunders began working with White Lake Township Police Department on December 30th, 2024, and completed her FDO program in April of '25. So we're super excited to have her here and, um, why don't we do the swearing in?
Yes, sir.
Now you can go face the clerk. Right there.
Please raise your right hand.
Better draw.
Thanks.
I do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of police officer for the township of White Lake, County Oakland, and the state of Michigan according to the best of my ability.
All right. All right, pinning on her badge is gonna be her mom, Jody. Good. All right, well, mom, come on back. Come on back, we'll get on a picture with you. There you go. All right, good. Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Way to go. Thank you.
Tim Terry. All right, Tim Terry, come on up. Very good. What year were you born?
Eighty-four.
Oh, God, eighty-four. That makes me feel so much better. All right, attending, his wife Anna, right there, daughters Tegan, Mila, and Maeve. You guys, right, everybody wave. All right, all right. Oh, I think it's better looking, brothers around here somewhere.
Oh, right there.
Very good. Jason's here.
Jason's here.
All right. Officer Tim Terry was born and raised in Holly, Michigan. He graduated from Holly High School in 2003. After graduating high school, he enlisted in the United States Armory, where he has proudly served for the past 16 years as an infantryman with the current rank of Staff Sergeant. Officer Terry attended Kaiser University for professional golf management, later transferred to OCC, where he graduated with an associate's degree in general studies. Officer Terry applied for the position with White Lake Township Police Department, was selected as a cadet recruit. Officer Terry was sponsored into the Oakland Police Academy, where he graduated, and was selected by his classmates to be the academy class president. Since graduation, Officer Terry began his career as a patrol officer for White Lake Township, successfully completing the field training officer program. No more swearing in. Now you can turn.
I do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of police officer for the township of White Lake, County Oakland, and the state of Michigan according to the best of my ability. Congratulations.
All right. Uh, it looks like Tegan and Mila are gonna pin the badge on their father.
I think they're masked around. I don't think so. Any relation to Jason, or were you guys masked?
A little bit.
No, that's my brother.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
See, I told you. Told you.
I already met him. I met him at my mom's house.
That's dirty blood.
All right, Lance, what do you say, buddy? So we are lucky enough to have Lance here. He was, he was, we hired him as a cadet prior to him going to the academy, which we sponsored him on. Uh, his mom Amy's here. Where's Amy? Hi, how are you? And his girlfriend Taylor. Hi Taylor, good seeing you again. Lance, you ready?
I'm ready.
All right. Officer Lance Green was born and raised in Fenton, Michigan. He graduated from Fenton High School in 2018, and upon graduation, oh, what year were you born?
2000.
Upon graduation, enlisted in the United States Marine Corps, proudly serving from 2019 to 2023 as an amphibious assault vehicle operator and reaching the rank of corporal. Officer Green credits his time in the military to instilling him with a strong sense of discipline, teamwork, and a commitment to service. After completing his military service, Officer Green continued his path in public service by working as a cadet with the White Lake Township Police Department. Officer Green was chosen to become a cadet recruit and was sent to the Oakland Police Academy, where he eventually graduated on June 2nd, 2025. Officer Green subsequently began field training, which he has recently completed on March 20th, 2025. Officer Green looks forward to serving and protecting the township of White Lake with a high degree of professionalism and honor. And we'll get you sworn in.
I do solemnly swear affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of police officer for the township of White Lake, County Oakland, and the state of Michigan according to the best of my abilities.
All right, Taylor, come on up and go hit the badge on.
Very good. Picture. Good? Well done.
Congratulations for your service.
Thank you, welcome.
All right, I wanted to, just to thank you again for letting us do this, and I wanna just tell you how much I appreciate the men and women of the police department, and how many showed up here to celebrate the fact that our people are getting their badge pinned on today. And I thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Give it a second here, clear the room. And speaking of presentations, there was one item that was, uh, should've been added to the agenda, but it wasn't, and because, you know, we don't always have the opportunity here to celebrate when people within the township are recognized for different things. Bye. And from time to time, you gotta fly your flag. So what I'd like to do at this point in time is I'd like to recognize Andrea Voorhees, that I'm pleased to announce that trustee Voorhees has been named the staff champion, see the picture, of the year by New Horizons at their annual awards ceremony held on October 9th, 2025. This prestigious award is presented to a New Horizons employee who exemplifies the following championing attributes: mission-oriented, person-driven, positive attitude, willingness to learn and apply new skills, flexibility, leading by example, teamwork, advocacy for persons served. Andrea embodies each of these qualities in her professional role in New Horizons, and brings the same spirit of leadership, teamwork, and compassion to her work as a trustee at White Lake Township. The township is extremely proud of Andrea for her well-deserved honor and grateful for her continued commitment to serving both her clients and the residents of White Lake Township with dedication and excellence. Congratulations, Andrea.
Congratulations.
Okay, next item on the agenda, thank you everyone, is the public hearing to hear public comment regarding approving the community development block grant, or our CDBG application program year 2026. As a Hutton-Tidemook County, Oakland County receives funds on a formula basis to meet the national deductives of four federal grants, one of which is a community development block grant, which we are going to hear public input for the PY 2026 application tonight. The overall goal of CDBG funds is to strengthen neighborhoods by supporting local revitalization projects, home improvement, and public services for seniors, low-income persons and families, disadvantaged youth, and disabled residents. The deadline for White Lake Township to submit its application to Oakland County for PY 2026 CDBG funding is December 1st, 2026. The township recommendation will be for the following programs to be included in its application: minor home repairs, senior services, Meals on Wheels, and youth services from Huron Valley Youth Services. Okay, at this time, there will be no more, no comments from the board in this public hearing, and I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing. The board will hear public comments on the YP 2026 Community Development Block Grant application. That is in the form of a motion, looking for support?
Support.
I have motion, I have support, roll call, vote.
Supervisor Kowal?
Yes.
Trustee Ruggles?
Yes.
Clerk Noble, yes. Treasurer Roman?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Trustee Voorhees?
Yes.
Okay, we are now in public hearing for the 2026 Community Development Block Grant Application. Anyone at this time will need to come up to the microphone, identify themselves for the recorder, and you'll have three minutes to state your case.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Bear, and I've been a resident of White Lake for 25 years. I'm also on the board at the Senior Center, our Dublin Senior Center, and I've been a member there for about 12 years. I know I don't look old enough, but I am. The reason I'm commenting on this is I'm not sure what the block grant has covered in the past, but I have an elderly brother who, who lives in Royal Oak, and reviewing some of the services that's available to him is really what kind of made me think about what we need to do in our community. Now, I know we have a lot of seniors here, and in my case, I, my husband passed in 2018, so I've had a hard time finding people to do minor chores like yard work, weeding, grass cutting, things of that sort, minor home repairs. And I think if we had something, and it's not even so much the money, but it's the availability. You know, you have one minor thing, you have to call specialists for each thing. So it ends up costing a lot. So I, I was thinking if we had maybe more funding for some type of minor home repairs, or as I said, yard work, or something of that sort, I, I think that it would help a lot. It doesn't have to necessarily be 100% free, but I think if we could come, you know, at a discount, and, and, because I, I know there's a lot of people in our community that are elderly, and they could use the services. So some of the things like the Royal Oak, what they do, they have a program called Roses, and they do things like they will come to the home, they can care for people as well, and they do it as, at a moderate fee. But they'll do the spring cleanup, lawn cutting, snow removal, gutter cleaning, storms, screen replacement, basement and garage, just the type of things that a lot of the elderly people can't really do, and they need assistance with. And I know that there are people, that there are organizations and people that can do this, but if we could have something available to, a lower rate, and something that, you know, maybe they could have three minor repairs at a time, or something of that sort, I think it'd be a great benefit for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Anyone else at this time? Seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the 2026 CDBG funding application. Looking for support?
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's been closed. Next item is Resolution 25035, approving the PY 2026 Community Development Block Grant application. Looking for a motion?
Mr. Supervisor, I'll make a motion to approve the fiscal year 2026 Community Development Block Grant Application Resolution Number 25-035.
I have a motion to approve, looking for support?
Support.
I have support from Andrea Voorhees. Roll call, vote please.
Can I have a discussion? Discussion?
Sure.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to get a clarification, and since I'm new on the board, the youth services that we have as far as Huron Valley Youth, uh, Association, and is it, is it, has it always been?
Yes.
Huron Valley?
We have a relationship with them, and it's also partial referral through our, uh,
Okay.
our judicial system, so to speak.
Okay, because I was just looking at from the idea that we have, you know, five different school districts in White Lake, and I was just wondering what percentage of the schools as far as for Huron Valley out of the five districts?
It's the majority is, is Huron Valley, yeah. And it's, we, we use the Huron Valley's youth assistance, our students use that a lot.
Okay.
It's, it's a diversion program, just allows them to do other things besides enter themselves into the court system.
Okay, okay. I just, just for clarification, I didn't know.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a good thing.
Yeah.
It's a good course.
So just, just, so Dublin Elementary is Wald Lake, and then Douglas Houghton is Waterford, and all the other schools are Huron Valley that are in White Lake.
All right, okay. We have motion, we had support, all in favor?
Roll call, you said.
Roll call, vote, I'm sorry, thank you. Mr. Clerk?
Trustee Voorhees?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Treasurer Roman?
Yes.
Supervisor Kowal?
Yes.
Clerk Noble, yes, and trustee Ruggles?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, request to approve agreement between White Lake Township and Huron Valley Youth Services for Youth Assistance Services. Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement between White Lake Township and Huron Valley Youth Services for the Youth Assistance Service Program.
I have a motion, looking for support?
Support.
I have motion, support from Mr. Ruggles. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Next item is the Resolution 25030, approval of the 2026-2031 Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Township Board, good evening. At your place today is a copy of the Capital Improvement Plan. Kristen has somebody else's, I think. Did you print that? Or did I put that at your seat?
It was here.
Okay. Well, whoever's missing one, Kristen has theirs, but for everybody else, it's in the packet online and available on our website. Back on September 18th, the Planning Commission held a public hearing, which is required, as you know, every year for the 2026-2031 CIP, and at that time unanimously adopted the plan, and it's, sent it along to you for your acceptance. You know, again, this is a tool that we use for budgeting, it's a tool we use for transparency, it categorizes all the needs of all the departments townshipwide for expenses that exceed $50,000. General cap, generally like a capital expense would be a new fire truck, it would be a new township hall, it could be a, a purchase of election equipment for an election because it's expensive, anything over $50,000. Oh, and a command vehicle for the-
A new, uh-
A new firearms range.
Yeah, absolutely.
A new firearms range at the new Public Safety Building, absolutely, everyone's included.
Absolutely.
And so again, I want to thank all of the elected officials, the department heads, the planning commission, the staff. There was no, we, we were short-staffed this year, and I want to recognize Hannah for stepping up and really creating the document in front of you. So I, she gets embarrassed to be recognized, but it's, it's what is due. The one change that I want to call out at the planning commission meeting when they did adopt this was the addition of Mrs. Mary Early to the CIP team. I don't see her tonight, unfortunately, but every year she comes in and edits this document. She is the editor-in-chief of all the documents that leave our office, and I want to recognize her especially as well, because of all of her efforts and hard work. But other than that, the document's ready to go. It's probably gonna have a new look next year, but the 2026 to 2031 CIP is in good order and ready for your consideration tonight. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them. But again, thanks to everyone for their help and participation.
Mr. Roman?
Motion to approve the Capital Improvement, Improvement Plan Resolution 25-030.
I have a motion on the floor, looking for support?
Support.
Motion of support?
Just want to make one comment.
Yes.
Uh, the 18 years that I was, you know, a planning commissioner, one of the things that I was always happy to know that the planning commissioner went through this detail by detail, challenged all the different departments and everything else, but came up with a very concise, very effective, and for fiscal responsibility for that. So I'm just glad that now I'm on the other end, and to be able to say that I feel very comfortable with being able to provide the support for the, the CIP.
Okay, so we have motion, we good? We have motion, we support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Next item is request approved notice of pause increases for the township hall and public safety buildings. Mr. Roman?
Well, um, you know, we had to put our program on hold due to the cybersecurity event, and because of the cybersecurity event, our bonding money got delayed, and because of it, some of the costs for the building have escalated, and McCarthy and Smith has been just great as far as coming up with a method to track this. And so what we're doing today is asking the board to approve this money so that we can continue on with our construction. And the total sum as of today is $212,363.47. So I'll put that in the form of a motion, and if anyone has questions, I'll try to answer them.
We have motion on the floor, looking for support?
Support.
Motion and support, question?
Question. Um, I just getting a clarification. The, the notification that talks about tariff increases as opposed to material increases, can you just explain the difference between those? Is it tariff ba, based on?
Basically, um, new tariffs that were put in place by our elected officials nationally.
Right, okay.
Um, those weren't in place if we had purchased these things when we originally wanted to go out to bond.
Okay.
So that time delay is what caused the increase.
So this, these are actually increases, but you're, we're, we're designating them because of the tariffs, saying that the tariffs-
Well, we just need board to, yeah, that's correct. We need, we need approval from the board to go ahead and spend this money.
Okay. So I just was trying to understand the difference between tariff increases and regular material increases.
Well, there, well- Yeah, there is a difference.
Okay.
Certainly, most certainly. I mean, the, the tariffs were created by the government. You know, inflation would be to blame for the, the material increases.
Okay. And also, if I could add, some of the deliverables were on a schedule where, for example, let's say something was supposed to be done in December of '25, now it can't be done until January of '26. Many of our subcontractors are union employees or employees who might get a January 1st pay increase, so if they're, do a 3% increase, that gets passed on to us because they weren't able to do it in December of '25, and instead now have to do it in December of '26. So those things are incorporated in this 182-page document, or a combination of documents that are in your packet. So there are costs like that, too, personnel cost increases.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing as we have-
I've got a motion.
Mr. Roman made a motion, looking for support?
Support.
Or Mr. Ruggles, support it. Roll call, vote please.
Trustee Ruggles?
Yes.
Supervisor Kowal?
Yes.
Clerk Noble, yes. Treasurer Roman?
Yes.
Trustee Voorhees?
Yes.
And trustee Anderson?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you. Next item is the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 34, Article 2 of the Metro Act, the White Lake Township Code of Ordinances. Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, basically, we're gonna, to amend this ordinance so that we're not, we're gonna be taking a bond out, limitations on the bond. For example, right now, we have a $500 bond that's posted for, for, um, the Metro PC Act, and we're just-
just amending that ordinance to reflect moving forward, to be able to collect a bond.
Unfortunately, there's been some communities, nothing against Metro PC, but there have been some contractors that can work in the right of way that have gone through certain communities and have not always performed to a level that they should have performed to, which is why we are modifying this act, just to put the township in a defensive position. I think it's a good, good answer. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion of approve the first reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 34, Article 2 of the Metro Act of White Lake Township Code of Ordinances.
I have a motion to move to second reading.
Support.
I have motion and support from Mr. Anderson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, ayes have it. Civic Center update, well, we've been busy, that would be an understatement. There has been significant work done on Stanley Park, the paving is done, we had to stop on October 15th because of the Mississauga rattlesnake, and that is federally protected, so they were in a mad dash scramble trying to get things done at that point. There is some things that'll have to be finished off in the spring, the park won't be accessible for the public for a little while because we're waiting to try to get some soil stabilized and a few things down there at first, but it is definitely going in the right direction, and I think it looks great. There'll be additional things we have to do, but we can't do any real heavy lifting until the spring. So as far as the buildings go, Mike?
I believe some of the wood is now starting to arrive for the township hall, so that is a good thing. Does anyone know if anything's been erected yet?
Yes, yes, quite a bit has actually.
Very good.
Yeah.
Public safety building, I mean, they've got part of that roof on, which is great, and they've got, I think it's the first layer of paving as well on the new, around the township hall and public safety building, so that makes it easier to just kind of really see what's going on. It just puts everything in perspective as to where it's going to be, and we're moving forward.
Yep, absolutely. Mr. Clerk?
I'm just going to echo Mike's saying, and moving forward and trying to catch up to public safety.
Yeah.
A little bit of a delay.
You know, the, the comment on the timber framing, the timber framing started to deliver at some time last week, and they have started erecting the vertical columns and some of the entrusses. If the weather will hold out, they should be able to get a roof on that thing by Thanksgiving, which will make a huge difference. And of course, mechanicals are buzzing right along plumbing, heating, electric, things of that nature, so there'll be a mad dash to get some of the brick and block work up on the lower level of the public safety building so we can start to get some provisions in there for temporary heat for the winter, and keep moving, so moving forward, so I think we're in good shape. Next item is trustee comments, I am going to move to Mr. Roman.
Gosh, just, you know, just a message for our governor, it's my understanding that our state revenue sharing is going to be cut next year and the year after. My message to you, Governor Whitmer, is what are you doing? Townships and cities, we rely on that money, we need that money, this cut is really going to hurt us all, so.
So, I agree completely. Andrea Voorhees?
Thank you. I asked all our board members tonight to wear pink, it is October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Two quick facts, one in eight women in our lifetime will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and one out of 100 men will be diagnosed with breast cancer. Thank you for the, we had a wonderful, sorry, trunk-or-treat, heard money reviews, the rain held out, we did get wet, but not that much, lines for the trunk-or-treating was around the barn, if anyone knows the property. We all walked out of there wet, dry, but excited and fun and waiting for next year. Thank you for the board members, they were able to help out, whether it be financially or physically being there, and thank you for the shout-out Supervisor Coawal. Not many people can say they have two, one job they like and/or love, much less say they have two jobs they love. I can advocate for the people of White Lake Township, and I also advocate for the special needs, people with different abilities population, so thank you.
Very good, okay, Mr. Anderson?
Good evening, everyone, I just wanted to give everybody an update that the vigil that we had for Charlie Kirk was, I see as a great success. Also, thanks for trustee, you are here now, trustee that ended up speaking and sharing a nice, wonderful word.
Thank you.
And it was great to see the pastoral staff as force of White Lake to be there, I got a chance to talk with a lot of them during that time period, and that's about it from that standpoint. We did not have a ZBA meeting, we will not have one in October, it's still, we have to determine if there's going to be any cases for November, so it would be a good break for a period of time. And the last thing that I just want to say is that knowing that it's Halloween coming up and trick-or-treating, I just encourage every, all the parents to be safe out there with their kids, and kids, be safe also, and enjoy your time as far as picking up candy.
There you go.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Noble?
Just like the, again, we had a great turnout for the Charlie Kirk vigil, and trustee Smith did an excellent job speaking in front of the crowd, and I'd like to thank the pastors for attending, and also, just like to wish, I mentioned our new ordinance guy is doing an outstanding job, he's out and about and doing a real excellent job. At that, Josh is our new ordinance guy, so if you don't know him, come and see him, he's very friendly, and I just wish everybody a happy and safe Halloween, and take you to the police department out there that are helping out that evening.
Yeah, Mr. Ruggles?
Thank you. Yeah, I'd like to say happy Halloween to everybody, won't be seeing each other again, so have a great time. The Planning Commission will not be meeting at all in October, so our first meeting will be in November, and I understand the trunk-or-treat was a, had a great turnout, thank you for everybody that contributed, I know a lot of people in this township chipped in, especially shout-out for Bob, Andrea's husband, Bob, he put a lot of time out for it.
Mm-hmm.
And Josh, Josh is a great guy, the ordinance officer, so that's all I got.
All right, trustee Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. So just to talk about breast cancer awareness, each year I also mention that it does affect your pets, which a lot of people don't think about, but it affects men, women, and pets, so of course, do those self-exams, they're really important to catch early. As far as the library goes, I just want to give them a quick shout-out to an event that they're having on October 25th at 1:00 PM, they're having a Halloween party, a fun-filled afternoon with crafts, games, trick-or-treating, and there'll be a parade at 3:00, and of course, costumes are welcome, and that's for all ages, I believe. And then, lastly, I just want to thank Lakeland High School, they had me again this year to judge their homecoming parade, and I always enjoy that, and it's so much fun to see the dresses and the suits and the floats, and the kids did a great job again this year, so thank you again for having me, and that's all.
Okay, thank you. Well, everyone, you've heard, it was a very successful trunk-or-treat, and we were dodging the raindrops, and at one point, we were wondering what was going on, and Chief and I were scanning the sky for lightning, and Dylan from the fire department was scanning the radar, and we're all kind of watching everything because our biggest concern obviously was not really the rain, but the thunder and lightning, but it, as it turned out, very successful. Really want to thank PD and Fire for having a presence and being part of the community, it's really great. In particular, I also want to put a shout-out to CERT, our Citizens Emergency Response Team, they were there and monitoring the parking lot and trying to keep everybody in order, and we had a great presence this year for the first time of our Eagle Scouts from our Eagle Program, which is a program that Chief and I kind of conjured up here after we had a crew come through and give us accreditation, our national accreditation program, we started, we got into a conversation with those particular people, and that's what led to this, so see as a great opportunity, I gotta tell you a really funny story though, real quickly, I, one of the young ladies asked me, she says, "Well, what are we doing here?", and I says, "Well, you're here to be liaisons for the township and, you know, be involved and watching, make sure there's no issues in small children, and just in general, to keep an eye on things, keep everything orderly." So she walked up to me a few minutes later, and I said, "Well, how much interaction have you had?", she says, "Well, I had a really kind of a funny thing happen to me", I said, "What that?", I had a woman walk up to me and tell me what a great costume I had on, and she said, "No, no, it's not my costume, it's my uniform", she said, "And then you went and explained the program to her." And so now, we have another White Lake resident that understands the program and understands that the youth involvement. You saw tonight that we brought how many from our CIP program tonight? There was, there was one of the three, yeah. Yeah, one of the three, and we've had others that have come through the program that the chief and myself recognized as needed to be revived as it used to be years ago, and through his guidance and his officers all involved in this program, we have literally grown our own, and I think the success rate is good, I think it's a good thing for the community, and it just leads to a better bond between everyone, so I'm very, very happy about that, and I certainly appreciate all your hard work in that. And we also now have a recruit program, which is kind of a copy a little bit in the fire department, and we're slowly working through that, and we're hoping to see some results here, it's a relatively new program, and Chief Feigner kind of inherited it, so we'll get reports from back on you as things progress, I certainly appreciate it, gentlemen, for being there. The official time for trunking and treating in White Lake Township on Halloween is from 6:00 to 7:30, that's the official time, I've had a lot of people ask me that, so parents out there from 6:00 to 7:30, you're good to go, that's our recognized time. I want to thank a couple different people for their exceptional contribution to the community. I want to thank trustee Scott Ruggles, because I hustled his donuts on the microphone all night long and cider, and those things were great, and we had like 2,000 of them, I think we had a few more than we needed, but it was good, I know PD got some, Fire got some, ambulance, Star Ambulance got some, and I made off with a bag or two, but nonetheless, certainly appreciate your graciousness in helping out with that, and the cider was great, definitely not enough cider, by the way, but we'll talk about that next year. And there's one person that really gets a huge, huge kudo, and that is my secretary, Kelly Lang. If Kelly Lang did, Kelly did not run this, these programs, of which she is kind of like our park-and-reck person internal, because we don't have an official person, so she's our, as official as you're going to get, she busts her butt and puts a tremendous amount of time in it, she reached out to Commissioner Long to try to get some grants for the program, to generosity of the White Lake Police Foundation, we had grants, so it's, it's a community that truly sponsored by members of the community and businesses within the community that you should, you know, go to Ruggles Farm, and, you know, in places like that, White Lake Road, and it's just that type of stuff that's greatly appreciated, so I certainly appreciate it. A highlight of my weekend was I got to see my brand-new grandson, Araton, who is six weeks old, and it was my first actual face-to-face with him because my wife and I were both bouncing between a cold, and we wanted to stay away from him, so that was it, and things are going along in White Lake and moving in a positive direction, I certainly appreciate all of my board members, everyone being here tonight, everyone watching us, and I certainly welcome all the new officers to our staff, it makes our community what it is. So with that, I say goodnight, God bless, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.